Y'all ready? We're going to call it. All right, guys, this is how this is starting. Mr. Wilson, today we're just going to do our prayers tonight.
Good job, gentlemen. We thank you for the thought, change, and present, pray that the season we make are for both west and east Polk, and that people are satisfied, and we can be satisfied and reminded of the need for good and poor. We thank you again for this day, and we hope to celebrate this holiday, and we hope and pray that everybody understands what this holiday represents. And thank you for your love, and kindness, and mercy, and grace. Be with us in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We pray for him.
Let the leaders to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Dan Bowman, Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Musch Davis.
Here.
Kristy Harden.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Tran.
Here.
For approval of our minutes from previous meetings. Motion to approve? Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
Our approval of the report of the offices. Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
All right, we have approval of notaries, we have Casey Lavermille, and we have myself. Uh, these are both reappointments for these, uh, they're both out of the form. So, do I have a motion? Motion to approve both of them?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
I will look at that.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
And we only have the two present minutes. Craig Witt, Patty Mina, and it's handed out. Only one. All right, so, we've got one into 101, forty-eight, six, ten, uh, of two thousand twenty-eight, ninety-nine, going into fifty-six, five-hundred, dash, four-ninety-nine for supplies of two, uh, two thousand twenty-eight, ninety-nine. We also have, uh, four-three-three, nine-three probation fees of twelve eighty-nine, twelve, going into five-three-nine, ten, dash, five-oh-nine for refunds, and also twelve eighty-nine, point, twelve. Uh, do we have a motion for that? Motion to approve both 101, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
All right, our Public Act Amendment, uh, for the fifty-seven is going to be tabled till next month. Fisher Pipinger said we didn't have all the information, is that correct?
Yes, I did have the question presented to me, it was presented to me last month, and I did not have the information in time.
Okay, so we'll table that till January of the new year. All right, uh, you all received a resolution to declare Polk County a sanctuary for persecuted Christians. Uh, Mr. Bill Russell is with us tonight, I'd like for him to give you a little information on that, and how it came to be, and all the ins and outs of it.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. I've got copies for a couple of people who may have a rotten little leg. If anybody wants to look up some of the material that supports the cases that I'm making here, uh, over on that desk there, there are a few copies. Feel free to grab them anytime you want to. So, I'm Bill Russell, my wife Marilyn and I are devout Christians, but you don't have to be a Christian to appreciate that the First Amendment codifies something that was the earliest attraction of our first settlers to come to the United States, to come to America. Our colonies were formed by people who were looking for religious freedom, and then our First Amendment guarantees that to all Americans. So, it's a, it's a vital and historic part of our national ethos. There's one thing about the resolution that I'm going to read in a moment that I want to make very clear from the start, and that is that this declaration will not cost Polk County or its citizens a single dollar. We're not promising anybody a place to live, a job, free meals, anything. We're simply offering to people who are looking for religious freedom, and they don't have it, a place that will welcome them, a place where they can settle and find a job and raise their family free from persecution. So, here's the resolution. Resolution urging all elected officials to respect the absolute requirement of the U.S. and Tennessee constitutions, and both American and Tennessee political traditions, to protect the religious freedom of persecuted Christians. Whereas in recent years, there appears to be an official U.S. government, government effort to dilute America's historical Christian majority by increasing legal immigration quotas from the Muslim world, and decreasing the quotas from European Christian countries. Whereas the religious makeup of the United States citizenry is thereby changing rapidly, resulting in practicing Christians becoming a smaller and smaller portion of the U.S. population. Whereas top federal elected leadership positions are increasingly being held by men and women who appear to harbor an antipathy toward Christianity. Whereas federal administrative regulations and state and local legislative initiatives are increasingly challenging First Amendment rights, especially the right to pre-exercise of religion, thereby burdening the U.S. Supreme Court with numerous time-consuming requirements to rule on these challenges. Whereas the U.S. Department of Justice and the Federal Bureau of Investigation recently have made show-of-force arrests and prosecuted Christians for minor offenses connected to anti-abortion protests, and pursued counterterrorism investigations into traditional Roman Catholic churches. Whereas Immigration and Customs Enforcement, an agency of the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, recently appears to have adopted a policy of giving priority to pursuing deportation actions aimed at Christian immigrants, such as the Romike family, who legally sought asylum from religious persecution for trying to give their children a Christian homeschool education in Germany, and ultimately settled in Tennessee. And the fundamentalist evangelical minister Torben Sundergard, the Dane who fled religious persecution in Denmark, only to be confined in a U.S. federal prison and ultimately deported, all while allowing hundreds of thousands of illiterate aliens from non-Christian countries to enter and settle unmolested throughout our country. Whereas public and social media platforms are presenting news and opinion stories from an increasingly anti-Christian point of view, such as characterizing the new Speaker of the House, Representative Michael Johnson, as desiring to turn the United States into a theocracy, thereby accelerating the dissemination of anti-Christian views among American youth. Whereas Christian clergy of all denominations have been pressured to comply with the new U.S. government definition of marriage, and not to refuse officiating at same-sex ceremonies in direct contravention of their Christian faith. Whereas Christian bakers, florists, and other creative professionals have recently faced legal hazard for refusing to contribute to gay couples' weddings. Now therefore be it resolved, the Polk County Commission hereby declares that Polk County is a sanctuary for all Christian U.S. citizens who are persecuted for their religious favor. They will be protected by the citizens and government officials of this county from persecution and social discrimination, and from political pressure and unlawful coercion to act in conflict with their Christian beliefs and values.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have any discussion prior to that?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Do we have any discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Uh, pass.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yeah.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
Commissioner Pipinger, the school bestsleeves.
Is that online? Dr. Jones is here. Uh, my understanding, Dr. Jones, I was, I hope he's on. The only issue is the same thing that we all discussed. Posted a year ago, but the interest rate had changed in the documentation, and that had to be corrected before the state. Do y'all want it, do y'all want to read the resolution or? As it only did, uh, Catrice had, who wrote the resolution, we didn't have it wrote in writing, that was sent from, uh, uh, who your office sent it though, uh?
True.
Oh, Chris.
Joel, true.
I think it was Joel that actually sent it over to me. It is a correction on the interest rate, the end amount is the same.
Yes.
And it's still a school.
It's still, a hundred percent, it's still a responsibility we just had. You're okay.
So, we just need to, we don't have to read it, we just need to say that.
One, one location, it should say in that resolution that this replaces the previous resolution.
Okay.
I believe that's in the very top paragraph. Like I said, Catrice had wrote this one, but I believe that's something she had, and it would be correct if it does replace in its entirety, it's not the formal resolution.
There's literally no changes except. It just took so long for the red tape that.
The interest rate changed, but it's still average, still to the same. I make the motion to approve Resolution twelve-one, four, three, as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
And Samantha Tran.
Yes.
Thank you all.
All right, I have the most important envelope we've had in a while. Uh, this is the appointments from, um, Executive Hatcher, he was unable to be with us tonight. So, uh, he did write a little note, um, I would like to thank each one of the residents who have applied for the appointments to the IED Board. I would like to say thank, I would like to say this was an easy decision to recommend to this body of commissioners, but it was not. This has been one of the hardest decisions as board appointments go that I've ever had to do. I have prayed and listened to the community as much as I can, and made this decision based on the voices of the people. I encourage each one that has applied to be involved and continue to work for the common goal of Polk County. The decision was extremely difficult due to knowing and having a relationship of some kind with each and every applicant, uh, Robert M. Hatcher. So, what he did was he gave me number one, it is sealed.
Can you take a picture of that first before you open it, because I don't want it to like be opened.
Oh, okay. Really? All right, I've got one that says, okay, everything is sealed, Kristy didn't get in it, you send out money or anything for ours too. We have one, two, three. This, you would have thought, I thought it was going to have to put it in a suitcase and handcuffed it to my hand. Yeah, yeah, all right, so this is going to be number one. I'm breaking, oh, I didn't have to break the seal.
One at a time.
One at a time, yeah.
You can go read them all three, right?
Yes, 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 okay. This is Kenneth David Bishop, um, voting district one. Do I need to read what they put on the application? Everybody like to hear that? Y'all got a copy of it, you're good, okay? All right, so, this is Kenneth, and he has been on the board since it started. Yep, okay. His is reappointed, that's correct. All right. I need a motion on him.
Are you just going to?
We'll read all three.
We'll read all three of them.
Red, okay.
Remember I had number one.
This is number one, we're going to put it in number one. So, it say no, that we did it right.
Yes.
Uh, Greg Barker, number two, he's from Copper Hill, he's at the third district. I'm not going to read. I'm glad it went his spit. It went in last.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was the interception.
I'm sure it was.
It was a concealed weapon. Uh, Monica Pharaoh, also from District Three. One, two, three. So, that will take care of the three seats we are down. Motion to approve all three?
Second.
Second. I'm sorry.
Any discussion?
I would like to move on to second.
Does anybody have a problem with that? You agree? Okay, all right, all right, let's do number one then. Number one, Kenneth David Bishop. All right, any discussion on that one? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Pass.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Pass.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
All right. Ready for the next one? Uh, Greg Parker. Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Pass.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Pass.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
All right, uh, last one, Monica Pharaoh. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Uh, pass.
Debbie Davis.
Pass.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Pass.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Pass.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, five, yes, one, two, three, four, pass. We're down for one more.
Change, yeah. Take six, pass.
Take six to pass, yeah. Do you want to ask if anybody wants to change something? Does anybody want to change?
We know who stands where, don't we?
Yeah.
We certainly know who stands where now, don't we? That's amazing.
It's okay, your John Hopkins is Parker.
Bids for the work on the boiler pots.
You have to place.
Is she here?
Yes, she is.
Oh, I didn't know it was you. Can I change?
Yeah.
I'll say yes.
Thank you.
Too smart lady.
Yes, she is.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to say something. Our IED Board, um, our non-voting spots come up in April, uh, we'll be taking those in January for anybody who wants to sit on those, because, um, April, our four non-votings will be come up, and we'll be looking at new candidates for that. So, you can pick, you can send your applications if anybody wants to be a non-voting sitting on that board. You can put in your application for that, we'll be taking them in January.
All right. Uh, bids for work on the boiler pots at the courthouse, uh, Robbie said there was only one bid, and it was under the sixty thousand, which was the SOS. Let's see, can you tell me? This is the same group that had done the work before. I will vouch for them.
Very good.
So, they did very good. He was very pleased with them.
Yeah, they did really good work.
So... I need a motion on this one.
I make a motion except the bid.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
All right, and then the two bids for the, um, West Polk Fire Rescue, um, only one bid, and this is for J&amp;H Heating and Air, they are local birds at Oakport, um, for fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and they have no heat at this point in time, so. Now, this is the main, this is the main hit, uh, there, I was going, the Oakdale.
Second.
Uh, Maggie.
J&amp;H.
Any discussion on this? Anybody familiar with them, or they?
Yeah.
They're good.
That's Jason Lueck, I know.
Oh, yeah, okay, come here. He might be working. All right, any discussion other than that, if not, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
Okay, we had no bids on the air monitor, um, Robbie's put it back out, um, January eighteenth at twelve o'clock will be the deadline. Um, he did say that one company he had talked to was going to put a bid in, but they have to subcontract out for the analyzing of the data that comes in, and they didn't know how much to put on for that, so they were going to work on that, so hopefully by January eighteenth, we will have at least that one bid in, uh, so that'll be coming. The updated airport lease agreement. Eric.
Uh, basically, uh, over, over the years, uh, the prior commissions have, have made some amendments to the original agreement, there just, there's never been an actual written amendment, so that's just to bring the agreement, uh, in writing up to, up to date with, basically, there's been some times where there, he's done some, um, you know, grant projects doing improvements to the airport, and, and he's had some, you know, prepayment of rent or rent credit for paying the county's matching funds portion, and then had some additional time, uh, for project, you know, the lease term, and extensions for lease terms and things, so that's, that's what it is, is just because there's been some, in the past, where some new commissioners are on there, and then they say, oh, why's he not been paying rent? Well, he, he did pay rent, it's just it was in advance, so, uh, that's just to bring it up current to what your current agreement is with, on the airport, um, so that's, that's all it is, you, the previous commissions have already approved all the amendments, it's just approving the written document, so.
Eric, any money that comes in on rent, on, uh, lease agreements for airport, by law, it has to go back into the makes of, of the airport itself, right?
That's right.
So, it can't be used as, as, uh, bush money for the county, you ask them back.
No, I just say, yeah, I just say it's with the airport, um. Yeah, I just, basically, it has all the recitals, just tells all the different times it's been amended, and I put, you know, what meeting the commission had done that, and then, so it's just to make it where you didn't have to have a special meeting or go through a bunch of old minutes and things to find out what your current agreement is, just for, to prevent confusion.
I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, roll call. Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Musch Davis.
Yes.
Kristy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Tran.
Yes.
All right, um, we had, um, a letter, uh, recognition for our volunteers, um, that, uh, had the really, really bad fires up here in Copper Hill, um, where multiple agencies, uh, even into North Carolina and Georgia, Kane, uh, and Bonko fires, and, uh, on behalf of Copper Basin Fire Rescue, the membership would like to take this opportunity to say thank you to Zion Hill Baptist Church of Turtle Town for the kindness shown. You have opened the doors to the church three different occasions when the fire department was in need without hesitation, the doors were unlocked, and our membership was allowed to use the restrooms, a place for comfort and rest and memory. The most recent call was the Wildline Fire that lasted for five days. Multiple agencies and members were assisting on this call. We were blessed as the church members in the community came together and provided nourishment, care, love, and support. Thank you again for the multiple acts of kindness shown. We appreciate everything that has been done for all our volunteers, and it was signed by Marty, uh, Schoenfeld?
Centerfield.
Eric Curtis, and then Robbie Hatcher. I think that's a really. And then we've got the resolution, transfer money from the Fund one forty-one to one forty-three, Polk County. School. Yeah. Say, Debbie, do you want to read that?
Which one?
It's the one that says, resolution to transfer funds for general purpose to the Cafeteria Fund.
Whereas Polk County Food Service, rights on month-to-month flying reimbursement basis funds are requested from the state of Tennessee, whereas the Cafeteria Fund has had multiple expenses that increase year to year. Polk County Cafeteria has offered free breakfast for over a decade. In September two thousand seventeen, Polk opted into the Community Eligibility, Eligibility Provision Program, which allows every student to eat breakfast free and lunch. Reimbursement is not based on, every student receives a meal. Reimbursement is based on the number of directly certified students in our district. The number has continued to drop, therefore revenues decline, but the financial aspect of managing cafeterias continues to increase. Whereas the generally accepted accounting principles, known as GAAP, considered a cash deficit in any fund to be significantly deficient, deficiency in internal control, and whereas Polk County School District does not desire to operate any fund without a cash deficit. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Education of Polk County School District, a school district in Tennessee, meeting in a regularly called session on this eleventh day of December two thousand twenty-three, by the County Commission of Polk County, a county in Tennessee, meeting in regular session on the twenty-first day of December two thousand twenty-three, that. Section one, the general purpose school fund shall transfer two hundred thousand to the cafeteria fund on December twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Section two, the two thousand, two hundred thousand transferred shall remain in the cafeteria fund as a designated fund balance for the general purpose school fund, and may be repaid at any time as noted in a resolution passed by the Board of Education and County Commission. Section three, the resolution will take effect on December the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. The Secretary of the Board of Education shall include this resolution in the minutes of the Hope County Department of Education. The county clerk shall include this resolution into the minutes of Hope County. Just it, that keeps going.
That's just the, the decline that's happened.
We gotta read this. She thought it was gonna be loud, didn't she?
I don't know if the score's on the liberal, but y'all have to pose a, a press for like that time, for, in the fiscal year?
No.
So y'all, y'all stay standing for.
Yes. Just because, i- if it was staying in One Forty-One or the general fund, it would have to be kicked back to fund balance, but we can designate it to cafeteria, which is a separate fund that is a federal fund. And that's what it amounts to, and what it amounts to is the way that they fund, uh, I know you just heard that, I'm, I'm gonna try my best to simplify it. So, when we started letting all students eat free in two thousand seventeen, then the way that they funded that program was they only funded the free and reduced lunch in the, in the people that were on welfare or, uh, WIC or things like that government programs. They only funded the lunches and breakfast back for those students. Well, they funded non-those students at a very small pace. And so, over time, it's just, you know, kept leaking the funds off because we were working at a deficit. And so, uh, cafeterias, you know, we try to have that as a self, self-producing whole entity that is, uh, mostly a government program. Starting this year, we, the increase in the amount that they pay for non-CIRP students increases. And so, this problem is gonna take care of itself, but until that bring, brings it up to where it needs to be, we needed to move that money from fund balance to help, you know, help keep it afloat, basically.
Well, that'll be better at the end of the year, so you're not going into the hole.
Yep.
As year-end closes, waiting for that money to come back in, so.
Yep, yep, and, uh, I mean, everybody knows it's a wonderful thing that students don't have to pay for lunch or breakfast, and, so it's just, uh, trying to maintain that program is all it amounts to in short run.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Mosh Davis.
Yes.
Christie Harden, yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Pippinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
There was a, uh, letter that we got from, uh, Director of Community Infrastructure, where the, uh, Copper Basin Women Girls Club got a, ordered a grand of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, let them begin work on their, um, new site. That was sent to Robbie on the fourteenth of December, so six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. For the area, um.
Does that change site designation or anything, or do I have to read them?
Not that I know of, but, um, yeah, I mean, you can reach out to Derek and them. I'll be glad to give anybody their information as far as the club goes, if you want to.
I was just gonna tell you.
Not that I know of, as of right now. We have it met in December. She is. We did get a monthly report from the Copper Basin Fire Rescue about, um, calls they're running, what's working down. Some of the papers that need to be handed in some stuff. It's depending if we're looking at. Hopefully, we're gonna get, be able to do a committee, committee meeting and look at some of this stuff here in the near future. So that's just for informational purposes? Yes, I'm assuming so. These last few papers and the minutes of the Board of Education are in there. And then the question that was asked about the IDB board, about having more than nine members, and Eric said, yes, there could be, there just had to be at least seven. So that's something, if that's something we want to do in the near future, change them to more than, to more than the nine we can. So that's informational background, so. Alright, anything else? Any announcements?
Merry Christmas.
Anybody have anything else there? Alright, we have a motion to adjourn. Alright, good. Now? I don't wear a lot of socks, we gotta get a picture. That's great mud, is what we say, great mud, my class. You guys realize you're twinning, right? Tom walked in, I was like.
Thank you, Crystal.
Hello.
I recognize you.
Thank you for your support.
He's upset about what's going on at, uh, Glen, at, uh, here. She is vocal, so, she's very, she's on my side.
She's on your side.
I'm on Buddy's side. I don't, I know. No, I mean, the waiter, he was trying to keep it, and then as soon as it started getting in his business, he just let it rip. 'Cause it's gotten worse. What are they doing on the auto?
Just want to say.
Buddy was. Huh? So what are they doing? So, Pete. You've got me. Well, I like people. He's on the other side of the road. So it just makes sure that, that, that. Well, the, the thing, and I was trying to play him how they're going through, Glenn's problems. Detective little war. How do I say this, but? Are they, are you hoping, uh, there's a? They're making, is it, is it gonna be like, like the others, where it's just like some cattails? Or is it gonna be like?
I think it's gonna be like.
Well, they all just threw ice, you, well, you saw what they did. So like, you, you don't want real trees, right? That used to be just, it was war, to me, so they did the, um, they got the, shut up all, Eric always, your pops, while they're playing all these. That doesn't mean stuff isn't still on there. That doesn't say by the way to do it. I didn't know that we came from this. When I was growing up, I carried broad leave back, I got picked on, I just, I carried broad leave back.
Come back until I have to.
Wow, that's incredible. How many?
I'm gonna give you there. He currently has the flu, so I would maybe have to. Close right now, but.
Well, make care.
Absolutely, well, so, and a lot of high schools here.
I only have a marker, so, sorry. I left a house with a pen and somehow lost it.
How you doing? I like what you said. Very good. Thank you for coming to do it. Now, are you a school board or? Super dippy? My sister is super dippy in Kansas City. Really? Yeah, so, yeah, that's great, I love it. How you doing, man? I love what you do. It's awesome. You do such a great job.
Are you?
What was your first name? David, yes.
Because once he gets a resume, they never. We know who the, ones that hold it.
Hopefully, you get it. A little bit. Oh, I know.
Darren is. He misses.